I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all are present this evening with the exception of Melissa Inger. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? So made. Stacy, second?
Second.
By Jonathan, any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. On our consent agenda this evening is the check wire transfer dispersment summary, the wire transfer EFT and ACH banking activity, building bond investment reports, bank reconciliation statement, approval of school board minutes on January 14th for the organizational meeting and the regular meeting, and a board study session on January 28th, and the resignations, terminations, and non-renewals as listed. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Enrique, second?
Second.
By Michael, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries five one. Moving on to the resolution of gifts. And that is a roll call vote. Do I have a motion to accept the acceptance of gifts?
So moved.
By Mary, second?
Second.
By Stacy. There are no comments or questions. It's roll call, so Michael?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
That motion carries six zero. Now we'll move on to Laker pride, special recognition, and Laker showcase.
Good evening. I am very happy we have a full house this evening as we have some amazing recognitions to provide. So first of all, I would ask our student artists to come up and join me. Prior Lake High School students, Tressa Schultz, Calvin Sund, and Quinn, is Quinn here? Okay. Quinn Razuka received awards at the South Suburban Art Exhibit, which ran from December 1st through January 8th. We have some amazing artists and some amazing art that they are going to showcase. I'm going to briefly share the awards that these students received, but then I would love them to just share a little bit about their art. So first of all, Tressa, who is a senior, earned the Normandale Award of Excellence, the exhibit's highest award. Her piece titled, help me, Para Todos, thank you, which means "For All," will be showcased on the postcard for next year's exhibit, which is amazing. Everyone's going to be able to see it, and it's fantastic. Calvin, who's also a senior, earned the Teacher Choice Award, the exhibit's second highest honor, for his piece entitled Portrait Series. In addition, Calvin, you also were one of five contestants who earned an Award of Excellence for the vase series showing over there, amazing. Well, Tressa and Quinn also each took home five, one of the five awards of achievement. Tressa for her piece, it's called Wicked Fan Art, and Quinn for her piece, which was entitled Old Brother. This is an event that honors and showcases art from across our conference, and I'm confident that I don't even understand the magnitude of what you two and Quinn have done this year, but I'm confident his teacher, their teacher could share a little bit about it.
On the spot.
So this was for the South Suburban Conference Art Festival. Each school in our conference submitted 11 pieces, 10 to 11 pieces. I think this was the 35th annual show, and it's always held at, well, it has been held at Normandale. But we picked pieces throughout the school that we felt showcased our best work, our students' best work, and there is a juror that goes through and jurors the show, and they he picked, I think it was 10 merit and five achievement and five of excellence. And then it was just amazing that we had top honors for both two awards, so we're very proud of them.
And they have done an amazing job because I know that they're amazing students who have a lot of intrinsic motivation and talent, and they also have had amazing educators and art educators along the way, including Christie, Steve Showalter, and Brian Perry at the high school as well. So thank you. Anything you want to add, Tressa?
Thank you for inviting us to this meeting. It's always nice to see the arts recognized in our school system. I know we are East STEM, but it's really nice to know the arts are important and appreciated. So thank you for allowing us to come out here tonight. It means a lot that you care so much about it.
We're so proud of you. Calvin, would you like to share anything?
I guess she hit the nail on the head. I don't know, I think art is kind of fun. I just kind of do it in my free time when I get bored, I guess. I don't really take it too seriously, and I just kind of have fun with it, and...
Calvin, are either of you going to, are either of you going to continue with this talented passion of yours into your future education?
I'm going to UMD Duluth, hopefully for theater education, for a theater major, and then also art education for something.
Are you Calvin plans for next year?
Yeah, well, I'll be going to the Air Force Academy and then serving in the military, and then when I get out and retire, I might do something with art because it's what I enjoy to do in my free time, and, oh, I might do that.
Well, I wouldn't wait too long because you can do a whole lot, even if you've got some free time. We are so proud of you, proud of the education and the way that you, as educators, continue to help our students find and showcase their passion. So thank you very much, and congratulations. Ken Clam, would you please join me? It is my pleasure to recognize and celebrate Ken Clam this evening, who is the 2018 Class Double A Track and Field Coach of the Year for boys in the state of Minnesota. Ken was honored with this award at a banquet on January 18th. The Minnesota Coaches Association chooses a men's, boys' coach and a girls' coach for this award. My notes say this is for Class A and Class Double A, and this is a big deal. And this is a big deal. This is a big deal because it was obviously chosen by colleagues who understand that in order to be a caliber of a coach who gets this kind of recognition and has earned the trust of his colleagues, he obviously needs to understand technique and strategy and all of those kinds of things that make our athletes really great. More importantly, Ken understands relationships. He understands how to get the best out of people, and he understands how supporting others and coaching them in all aspects of their life make them great athletes and great people. We're really proud of you, Ken. We're grateful that we get the opportunity to work with you every single day so that you can touch our lives and the lives of our students. Thank you. Oh, he's got a few words. He saw the Grammys last night, and he's got a few words. Some music educators back there to help with music if we need it.
Well, Russ always kids on these things, like make sure you have a speech ready, so. I do want to say a few things because it is an honor. It's not so much an honor for me personally, but I think it reflects the hard work of a lot of, I guess, adults and young men. It's been a very humbling honor to receive this recognition as Boys Class Double A Coach of the Year. When I started coaching track in PL 20 years ago, I always believed we could be a top program. It's been very rewarding to see the program's growth from 35 boys when I started to over 160 boys out for the team now. I've been fortunate to have had some great coaches to work for and with, including John Bennett, Russ Reitz, Scott Janica, Nick Grimmy, Pete Hartman, John Flattness, John Marish, Alex Van Krevlin, and RJ McGinnis. Through my years, I've had the honor of working with so many great young men, definitely too many to mention. I've always looked at track as a vehicle to use to develop young men, not to be just fast runners, but to be good sons, good students, and someday, good husbands and fathers. Thanks to the Prior Lake community and school leadership for always being supportive of our program, which allows me to do what I love. Thank you.
And next on the agenda, we have an amazing group of students from our MinCaps program that we'd like to invite up at this point, and I will let, they're going to share a little bit about some of their corporate projects, and I'm going to turn it over to coordinator of MinCaps, Eric Sill, to kick things off and showcase and introduce the students. Thanks.
Well, thank you, and good evening. I'm Eric Sill, I'm the coordinator of the MinCaps program. And for those of you unfamiliar to the program, we are a profession-based immersion program where we take 11th and 12th graders out of the high school and put them in a real-world setting. I wanted to showcase this particular group because they went above and beyond what we expect at MinCaps and what the client expects. Part of the experience for our foundations of business pathway, as well as our marketing analytics pathway, is partnering with companies on eight to 10-week projects. And these projects are determined by the company. The purpose is determined key deliverables and some key framing questions. So the teachers, and I have, do not have the answers at all. In fact, the companies don't have the answers, so our kids have to come up with it. So this group went above and beyond, and the work that they did through the eight to 10 weeks has led to now more projects with the company that they'll share in a moment. But this company also contacted me last week, asking, "How can we hire your students as interns this summer?" And these internships are typically only offered to college students, and so, you know that? They will, they will next week when we offer the internships to the students, and there's dollar signs that are tied to those internships. But the students will also share that they leverage their professional network. So each one of these students has a 101 mentor, but then they went and found other folks to interact with as they got to their final client presentation. So without further ado, I'm going to let our students introduce themselves and share their experience.
Hi, I'm Tori Walker. I'm a senior at Prior Lake High School, and this is also my second year at MinCaps.
Hi, I'm Raj Pranmurti, and this is also my second year at MinCaps, and I'm a senior.
So we created a little presentation that we showed most of our highlights from what we actually showed our client, and so, yeah.
So basically, we're with a company called Dealrise, so we decided to make a private label implementation at the company itself. So we want to work with Amazon and figure out how we can make a private label brand. So we basically put it into three steps, the process of being, researching Amazon itself, looking at the items sold, and finally, the branding phase. So when like, the first phase, like I said, Amazon basics, the second phase, researching certain products that sell, and the third phase, going into more depth, developing like a logo, what you want to sell, and like, just branding out, making like a physical platform for the brand.
So for the first phase, we did a lot of research online, just looking up what Amazon actually processes look like and how they figure out what is going to be at the top of your list when you search, and what is going to show up more, and what makes people actually want to buy it. So we looked at competition, adding value, looking at FBA and BSR, which are fulfilled by Amazon and bestseller ranking, which really impact where you are on the list, and also looking at prime status and quality. The second phase was looking at, into research of niche categories and making sure that the product that we actually looked into producing would actually make the sales back, and also, we decided at the end to go into the pet category.
So here is a database that we use off our own personal tool called Tableau. So throughout MinCaps, we were informed of the many other tools we could use to incorporate into our corporate projects. So we use programs such as Tableau and Jungle Scout, which you don't usually use at the Prior Lake High School. So MinCaps also offered like a variety of tools we were able to use in a real-life scenario. So we're not going to go too much in detail, but this is basically the top 2,000 products of pet categories. So this is why, the main reason why we decided to talk to Dealrise about selling dog collars. And this is just another example of Tableau. For all our data, we used Jungle Scout, which is an app where we can target all the brands and how they're doing, you know, how's the revenue, how's the profit, and we just took all this data, it took a long, long time, and then after that, we came to a conclusion and eventually just put it in, you know, bar graphs and just line graphs.
Jungle Scout is also specifically for Amazon itself and takes all the inside information from Amazon.
So the final phase, like I said, branding phase and product design, we want to talk about how could we design a certain product for like a dog collar. So one of our team members who is in right here and now, got his dad, who's actually a graphic designer, designed a pet collar logo. So there's multiple options, a couple choices, and then we talked about also the aesthetic of selling a product. So we looked at the reviews of Amazon buyers, like what's wrong with the box, or like what's wrong with the product, there's not enough pictures to see. So, you know, just the appeal of the eye, if you think of it like an iPhone box, it's just so sleek, you know, you don't want to get rid of it. You don't want to get rid of it, like you want to hold it. So it was like that. So we want to design a certain aesthetic or eye-pleasing box that you could hold on to and that someone would want to buy.
So after that, we basically had a conversation with them about what we've learned and everything like that, and just being able to talk to our mentors about this too. Like, my mentor, he works in the Prior Lake area, but he's a CFO for a company, and just being able to talk to him about shipping costs and everything like that, that I wouldn't really have access to, really helped us a lot, as well as another one of our team members has a mentor at Best Buy, so we were able to go there and present to them and get feedback before we actually went to our client.
My mentor actually attended the college that I actually just got accepted to, MCAT, so he really helped me out on my creativity and implementing my like creative process into working with Dealrise itself, coming up with new ideas, and just expanding my inventory as well. So MinCaps also offers a lot with the mentor program, where you talk to real-life people who actually work places, like maybe you want to like join in, fill in their occupation sometimes. So for my mentor, he attended MCAT, which I'm going to go to next year, and it really helped me open up and connect with multiple people, as well as the corporate project. Great opportunities, like Mr. Sill said, the internship chance. So it's, I'm really grateful for the opportunity, and we're thankful that MinCaps is, you know, in our hands and is a tool, and are just like toolbox. And yeah, if you want to contact us, any questions?
Impressive.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. Wow, that was impressive. Thank you very, very much. I know oftentimes, and I think it just happened last week, MinCaps has a showcase of some of the work that they're doing in their presentations, so I would strongly urge any of you who are able to visit there and see the students and listen to their demonstration of learning, it's incredibly impressive. Lastly, and certainly not leastly, great things happen in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools because we have amazing support at the board level. And tonight, I want to recognize our board members. I want to thank you for everything. As we, or I, also read the resolution for School Board Recognition Week. So whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes the importance of public education in our community, and whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools appreciates the vital role played by those individuals who as local school board members establish policies and ensure an efficient and effective school system, and whereas school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools, where our school board members are charged with representing our local educational interest to state and federal government and ensuring compliance with state and federal law, and whereas school board members selflessly devote the knowledge, time, and talents as advocates for our schoolchildren, whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes and salutes the members of the Prior Lake Savage Area School Board by proclaiming February 18th through 22nd, 2019, as School Board Recognition Week. Thank you truly for everything that you do. I hope that tonight, as you get a chance to just see a glimpse of some of the great things that happen in our district, you feel proud knowing the long hours that you put in, help us get better every single day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Terry. And we'll move on now to personnel items. Executive Director of Human Resources, Queer?
Good evening. Several personnel issues to consider tonight, starting with candidates for employment. The board is requested to take action on the candidates for employment as presented in your board packet.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the candidates for employment as listed?
So moved.
By Mary, second?
Second.
By Stacy, any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. I'll let you just keep going.
All right. Two retirements tonight. The board's requested to approve two retirements of two child nutrition workers, and before you vote, I think Emily Malone has a few words to say on both of those individuals.
Emily, I'm going to need you to come up to the microphone. You're not going to get off that easy.
Good evening. I just wanted to say a couple of quick things about these two retirees because they've been with us for a really long time and have served us with excellence. Natalia Kapilov has worked for us for 25, 21 years, excuse me. She started at Grainwood Elementary School as a dishwasher and server, and was there for about four years, and then applied to be the assistant manager over at Hidden Oaks Middle School, and she's been there for the remaining amount of time. She's an extremely hard worker, and we're sad to see her go, except she is the type of person that doesn't want to stop working necessarily, so she's going to go on our sub-list when she can, so we're excited for that. And then we have Paula Sorenson, she's been with us for 22 years. She actually started in 1997 when Glendale opened as the cashier there and was in that position the entire time. All three of her kids were in that school while she started her career there, and they've all now graduated and moved on, so she's ready to do that too. So just wanted to say those couple of things. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a, do I have a motion to approve the district retirements?
So moved.
By Stacy, second?
Second.
By Jonathan, any comments or questions? I'd just like to say on behalf of the board, thank you for your service. That's awesome. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. Continue.
All right. Third personnel item is approval of leaves. The board's requested to approve the following leaves as presented in the board packet.
Do I have a motion to approve the leaves of absence as listed?
So moved.
By Mary, second?
Second.
By Enrique, any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. And your last one.
And finally, approval of new and revised job descriptions. There are two for your consideration of controller and technology specialist as presented in your board packet.
Do I have a motion to approve the new and revised job descriptions of controller and technology specialist?
So moved.
By Jonathan, second?
Second.
By Stacy, comments or questions? I have one. Could you explain the controller position? Is that a new position? Is it a new title? Is it, I don't remember hearing controller before.
It is a position the district's had. We just updated it to more closely reflect the actual duties that that person is doing.
Okay, all right. And then the technology specialist, is that an additional person?
Again, I think Paul's in the same category, just updating.
All right. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. Thank you. We'll move on to unfinished business. PDSA 6, approval of strategic plan recommendations. Is that you, Joe?
It's me, actually. Christie's going to help me with the PowerPoint, but I'll go ahead and speak to it. Good morning, or good morning, good evening, board members. I know in the morning at 4 o'clock, I will be on a webinar listening to the weather. So good evening, board members, audience members at the DSC, and viewing public. I'm excited to share information tonight about the strategic plan review process in which we have been engaged. Our outcomes right now, we're going to review the process with you really briefly, talk just a little bit about the input that we have from board members as well as stakeholders, and then ultimately, present the recommendations for new strategic directions, which would go into effect July 1st. We'll finish this year with the goals and the current strategic directions that we have, but we'd move forward from there. As a review, again, I think I shared this previously, every district has some kind of strategic planning process, and the purpose of that is to provide clarity for the district and the community regarding the direction and the foundation of our work. I'm proud that we have always used our strategic plan as a working document, and we reference it constantly as it drives our resource allocation and alignment to the improvement that we want to do. You can see, just sorry, Christie, on that last slide, you can see that it's been a while since we had gotten a large group together to take a look at our strategic plan, so we felt it was important that we do that. The next slide just does showcase our strategic plan, which is our promise to our community, and we want to make sure that it reflects what it is our community wants as we are part of that ever-changing global community. So because this plan impacts all of us, we did an open invitation to anybody in the community that wanted to attend. We communicated that multiple ways, and we were thrilled that over 125 people came on November 1st to the, you can go to the next slide, Christie, to the event where we had a chance to do an overview of our strategic work and our priorities, and then select and get input from them, really about what's the work that's needed to take us into our future. The next slide shows the various meetings that we met to discuss input from our community. Administrative team met to take a look at the data and then continue to draft recommendations that we brought to the board a couple of different times, and then back to the administrators, and then back to the board. Had a great conversation at our last board study session, and the recommendations that we're bringing forward, as you see on the next slide, some of these are going to sound very familiar to our community, and some of them are a bit different. First strategic direction continues to pay attention to measurable student learning, which is our priority, and the rest of that strategic direction charges us to reduce achievement gaps as we provide equitable student opportunities through personalized learning and student engagement. Our second strategic direction recommendation continues our fiscal responsibility through operational excellence and the alignment of human, financial, and physical resources to our district goals. The third strategic direction requires us to expand innovation to improve the learner experience. Number four, our previous strategic direction talked about environmental education. We have moved that to integrate eSTEM focus across the district. Tressa spoke to this a little bit. This does not mean that arts aren't an important part of our district. What we wanted to do was to make sure that we were able to really live the eSTEM work that we have been doing and to deepen that. There's been a lot of buy-in with our staff and students and community, and we want to continue to do that work well, as we also look at how best to support all areas and curricular areas and programs that we have. Number five is a brand-new strategic direction, and one that I don't think that there's an educator in the country right now that wouldn't say it's a need, and I know that we have work to continue to do as we support our students and family. That strategic direction calls us to provide a safe, secure, and supportive environment that nurtures the social... that nurtures the social and emotional well-being of all learners. And lastly, we want to continue to engage students, parents, families, and community to strengthen a culture of respect and inclusion. With that, Board Members, we'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have prior to requesting action on these strategic direction drafts.
Are there any questions from the Board? As Dr. Stallow said, we went over this at a Board Session, it went back to administrators, and came back to a Board Session, so we've had some lengthy discussion on these directives. So I think we're comfortable with moving forward. Any other comments?
Well, I would just say, I think with the timing, the way it worked, I think it was great that we were able to have past Board members that have been experienced to new Board members, that pretty much all voices were at the table at some point or another, so I think it's a good collective view, and especially with the 128 attendees that was varied and in a lot of different voices at the table. So I think it's really representative of the community.
And also, just to reiterate this plan, we're going to affect July 1st, 2019?
Yeah.
I thought you said that, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, no, thank you, and I'd just like to add again my gratitude to Board members, to the administrative team, but really to that large community group that showed up and really participated in an active, engaging way.
And I do think the, if I can add, I think that the community members were the people who, we heard from so many people, that that fifth objective of safety and not just safety, but a supportive environment was something we heard from numerous folks, and I think it's great that we're responsive to that.
Anyone else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the strategic directions as outlined?
So made.
By Stacy, second?
Second.
By Enrique, any other questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
You're up again, Legislative Platform with your committee.
Before you this evening, Board Members, is a document that we have been working on for the past several months that really outline the legislative priorities that we believe are important for us to advance to our legislators as the legislative session has opened. The process that we use is we review a whole lot of other education organizational platforms, and then we really look at our own district, our own needs, and determine what are those few things that we wanna be sure that we advocate for at the state level, especially right now as we're beginning the first of a two-year biennium session, and we know that both money and policy will be important in this conversation. This has gone through both the administrative lens and the legislative Public Engagement Committee lens, as well as a discussion at the Board Table and, or at the Board Study Session, and at this point, we'd like to bring it forward for consideration and approval. Is this supposed to show up on the screen? I don't know if it's supposed to show up on the screen. I don't think it's on the screen. Just checking. Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Legislative Platform for 2019?
So made.
By Mary, second?
Second.
By Jonathan, any comments or questions? Okay.
One comment I would ask is, at the legislative meetings, have you guys received any feedback yet from any legislators, or is there any additional information, a ray of hope, maybe?
I mean, I know I've been to AMSD, we've had a couple of conversations with some of the leaders at the Capitol. You know, I think they're just kinda all taking it in right now. There's a lot of requests coming from everywhere, and that's the one thing that they reiterate is, you know, they know schools are very important, but we also have roads, bridges, you know, and human services to take care of as well. So, I think that's what we'll be working on in the next month or so with having some meetings with them, as far as even the Board here, but as well as going down to the Capitol and kinda advocating. So, we're hopeful. I mean, you know, you gotta put a number out there, and hopefully we get it, so we'll see.
Enrique?
Yes, so from the Schools for Equity in Education meeting that happened this week, we had the privilege of having the Department of Education Commissioner, Mary Catherine Ricker, in attendance to give a keynote, and she actually addressed two of our four funding priorities with regards to special education funding and school property tax equity and equalization. So I feel pretty confident that there will be some progress made there, which is something very near and dear to my heart.
I think the other two points, thanks for, Enrique, for sharing two of those. The other two funding priorities that I wanna talk a little bit just about is, and this does align with the other organizations in the state, is we are advocating for a 3% increase in each of the two years on the formula, as well as an index to inflation. And then the last funding priority that we have is allowing school districts the flexibility to use long-term facilities maintenance funds for school safety and security enhancements. So, those are the four, as Enrique talked about, the other two that we're advocating for, and, you know, we'll have an opportunity when our legislators come on February 25th to visit with us, and we also have some other advocacy days set up that we'll be able to begin those conversations.
And just to clarify, so last biennium, we had a 2% increase, and that was long overdue, so now we're trying to catch up with the 3% increase. And of course, a key funding priority that's been out there for a while that we are really trying to get through this year is the elimination of our requirement to actually cross-subsidize ourself and improve and meet the needs for special education.
Exactly.
Comments? Okay, I think I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
That motion carries six zero. Facilities Planning and Construction, Assistant Director Holberg.
Good evening, Chair Schimmick, members of the Board, Dr. Stallow, here this evening giving you a facilities planning and construction update. We start out usually by looking at this internal document, just charting our progress as we go through the design process. You know, again, it's more of a, kind of a public version of how we continue to go through the process of having groups come together, talk about design, bringing things to finance facilities, long-range planning, design teams to the, or design plans to the Board, Board Review, Board Approval, advertisement. As you can see, as we have more bold-faced things, that, those are things we've accomplished. And so, we're sort of on the tail end somewhat of the design team process. We have two more projects after this evening, New Elementary, as far as going to bid and going through that, and we have Grainwood, that's a little bit further out on the horizon there. So, we're sort of on the home stretch with the design standpoint, and so that's a good thing, but that doesn't mean that we're resting. We have a lot of construction that's happening in the district. We have a lot of things that are in motion that certainly in our Operations Department and our partners with Nexus, Wold, and Deveter, there's a lot of things that are, that are happening on a day-to-day basis across all aspects of the district. And so, in many ways, we can't put all of that on a nice little grid, a nice little chart, so I do wanna recognize the work that's taking place, and probably the most visible thing is when you drive around the district, you start seeing construction in all of the sites. And again, on budget, on time, you know, moving forward so that we get those spaces ready for kids, ready for learning, that is our priority, and we've got wonderful contractors that we're working with, and it's been a very smooth process so far, knock on wood, as we keep going here. So, this, tonight, we have three things. We're gonna give you just a brief overview of some external renderings of the New Elementary School, and then that will be new for the Board this evening. The other two will be talking about a budget overview, and then also the second part of the Prior Lake High School bid package. The, all three of these have gone through the Finance Facilities Long-Range Planning Committee for review and discussion. The budget overview and the bid package, those are tandem items. We've talked about those at two Finance Facilities Long-Range Planning Committee meetings and at our last Board Work Session. So, we're bringing it full circle tonight to bring it forward for discussion, and then subsequently seek Board approval to move forward with the recommendations. Okay? All right. So on the New Elementary front, as we look at the external, again, you can see this is the south side of the building. We, again, we've had a variety of design teams, teachers, administrators, just really giving input on the building and really kind of the fingerprints on the building. Again, we're looking externally, but again, you can see later tonight, pending Board Approval, the New Elementary will become named something. At least that's pending Board Approval tonight. But again, you can see as you come in, cafeteria's on the left-hand side, office right in the middle, and then you start going into the learning wings to the right, and then it wraps around the back of the building. Looking at that southeast corner, you start to see how where those learning commons open up for student learning, going into the classrooms and having a pod area, again, breakout space for students and staff. Around the backside, North Alcove, where the pathway leads up to is the Learning Commons or the Media Center is what we might, you might be more familiar with from a terminology, but you see sunlighting coming in, having that appeal. And then also, we've talked a little bit about looking at that space as an outdoor learning space in the back there with the building. The door on the left-hand side, there's three different areas or learning towers. This backside of the building is where students will be dropped off, and they will go right into their learning towers up into, I guess, basically a mudroom where they will put their clothes or their coat, backpacks, and then they'll go right into the Learning Commons. So again, more of a design that's similar to what we're seeing other elementaries do, but it also frees up more space for education when you get coats, backpacks, and boots out of the classrooms. This is a broader look at the back loop from the bus loop. The green space that you see there is where we're anticipating our playground being, and so when buses are not there, the bus loop would then be hard surface for students playing games, things like that. So we get a dual purpose out of this, and of course, stop traffic from going in there when students are playing on the playground and on the hard space. Here's the backside looking at the gym and FIAE space, and as well as receiving, as Director Delwell would say, the heartbeat of the building. But again, also to ensuring that we have very free flow of deliveries with materials coming and going, not interfering with traffic or parents coming in the front of the building or playground or students playing bus loop. So this is more on the west side of the building. So it kinda gives a little bit of a personality, as you can see from these personality to the building. Yes, question?
Could you elaborate on the environmental aspect of the building?
Yes, thank you. That's a great question, because that has come up a couple of different times. So if you look at the, I'm gonna try to do the best that I can, because this was pointed out by our, one of our engineers from Nexus Solutions. So, if you look behind the American flag, you see that dark box panel, and that's an integrated system for our district for heating and cooling for this building. And so, Mary, I think you might be able to speak to this better, but that is an intentional design of the building that, as the core function of heating and cooling, the air through the panels is able to be heated, cooled from the sun or from the external elements, and then cycled through the building. And so, it's a very functional part, and also, you know, kind of that focus on environmental education and being, and just a fiscally sound design as well as an environmentally friendly design as well.
Are any of those solar panels?
No.
No, I don't believe there's solar panels.
It's a solar wall. So, it's perforated metal panels that preheat the air before we use it for the building.
Considered a solar wall?
Or condition the air.
Okay.
Any other questions on the elementary?
Okay. We'll move to the budget overview, and in your Board Packet after this presentation, there are a couple of documents, and I apologize they're out of order. The two for this that I'm gonna be referencing is page 68, the general fund capital allocation, and then page 77, and I'll ask Julie Sink to join me here, which are fund balance overviews. So we've had a couple of conversations here, and they're tied together because it's pertaining to the high school bids. The high school bids went out, we did go through and, and go through and really kinda tighten up the project. The bids came back in within about 5% to 8% of projected budget, and we have sufficient contingency to move forward this evening with the recommendations on the, on the Prior Lake High School bid packages. One of the things that we're noticing is by doing that, we're leaving the district with a contingency of about 1.65%, which is a little low continuing that we have existing construction going out, going on right now, as well as we've got the Elementary and Grainwood coming on down the road. And so we started having conversations about understanding, is there a way, well, first of all, let me back up. What's leading to what we anticipate is this contingency, more contingency being used? There are three factors that we've identified. One is the steel tariffs and the impact on steel prices. Second of all, cost of labor has increased. There is a workforce shortage with a lot of our trades, and that, we're starting to experience some of that with how things are being bid. And then finally, it's just the rate of inflation is higher than what we had budgeted for these projects. So those are the three main things that we're attributing, how we're using this. We're still within budget, but it, we wanna ensure that we're able to honor the design team and the recommendations coming forward from the stakeholders so that we can bring forward a, you know, buildings that will be functional, efficient, and then certainly aligned to the standards that we anticipate for our school district. And so, the conversations we've had is looking at a fund balance as a, as a way to allow for more contingency in lieu of, as we look at future construction projects with the Elementary. Certainly, our focus is gonna be on using the contingency first, but as we go through this, identifying and reserving fund balance in order to offset some of those, what could be additional cost increases that we might see with those final two projects. What have I missed?
I think you hit it all right on the head. I think this is kind of bridges the gap for the district to say, yes, we can continue with these projects. On page 77 of your Packet, it shows on there what it would look like to assign $1.5 million from the general fund into, to be utilized at the, during this construction process. And as Mr. Holberg stated, we would utilize the contingency and the interest revenue that we are receiving from this first, and then this would be utilized as needed to finish these projects up. And so we would assign those at the end of this fiscal year if the Board approves this, and that could be used, and you'll see that being spent down as needed through the next two years as we finish these construction projects.
Julie, can you speak to the fund balance policy and where we're currently at? What impact that would be?
Sorry. Our fund balance policy right now says that the district needs to have a fund balance between 8% and 12% of expenditures, of unassigned expenditures. And so, as you look at page 77, that's that top section. Right now, we're at 14.8%, and this would bring us down to just a little over 14% by utilizing this. So that's where the district would still be in very good fiscal shape. However, you would be able to continue using, to continue completing all the projects as they're being designed and completed through construction.
Are there any questions from the Board? Again, we went through this quite a few times, just recently. I appreciate your explaining the fund balance versus, I know it comes out of general fund, but not to say that it's gonna take away from something else we're doing. This is fund balance money that we have to use as we need to?
Right.
Just to make that clear, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Are there any questions? Stacy?
Just as far as making sure that, you know, we're delivering what the referendum said we were gonna deliver. So as far as like issues with space or anything like that, there hasn't been any like square footage that we've had to like scale back or do anything like that throughout this whole process, because we've been kinda going through this, I mean, the inflationary and the tariffs has been going on for a while, so through all the projects, I would assume up till this point, I mean, we've kinda talked about this a few times, but as far as deliverables to the community.
We monitor what we call scope creep quite a bit, which, but we also wanna honor all the requests for the design, because when it makes sense to do something, we think it's important that we complete some of those projects as we're doing something. So, there are some instances where we've had, we've made changes or additions and deletions as well, just so that we're accomplishing what exactly that we told the community that we would complete. just so that we're accomplishing what exactly that we told the community that we would complete.
Again, I just, I think as I just have a comment is, and I kind of think we stated this earlier at the study session when we talked about this as well, is that, you know, we are fairly conservative with our budgeting every year, and so we've always, you know, we have the eight to twelve percent, but we're always seeming to be above that. And in my mind, this is a perfect use for why we would use and need to use money on this. This is one-time money that will last the district for years and years and years as far as building and square footage. So it's something that I will definitely be supporting. And I like the fact that it's assigned, so we can kind of track where it's at.
And I do want to reiterate it as one-time funds so that it's not an ongoing every year that we would be utilizing these funds. It's just once, and then, you know, so those funds as, you know, if we can recover them through the next couple of years, that would be helpful too.
Any other questions?
Julie, you, you talked at FLRIP that we are anticipating that this is, I think we're preparing for the fact that in, depending on what happens going forward, we may be back again. I think it's worthy just to just discuss that. And you, you mentioned the one-time funds. I think it's good to identify, if I remember that, that conversation correctly, we are, we have some additional one-time funds because we have not yet opened the buildings that we're going to be funding. And we're able to put those one-time revenues to a one-time cost. I think it's helpful to discuss that.
So as we've, our fund balance has gone up because we are, as we wait for these buildings to be opened, some of those funds that we've requested from the community are being held by the board until those buildings get open, and then we'll be utilizing those funds on an ongoing basis. So the one, they're sitting as a one-time fund at this point, yes. Because we have those, the buildings aren't open yet, so we haven't staffed them. Does that answer your question? Do you want me to go into more detail on that?
Well, I think, I just think it's helpful to, to have it out there during a meeting, discuss.
Julie, I did want to ask a question. I have two questions. One, the, the first statement that Jonathan said that it's a possibility, particularly given the current economic environment and the tariffs, et cetera, that we may be looking at other one-time funds to put aside, particularly, I believe, with the elementary school? And I was hoping you could address that, in addition to the 1.5 million here.
There, there's always a possibility with the current economic that we would have additional costs with the new elementary school. We are monitoring that very closely. I don't want to, because we haven't received those bids, it's hard to say what's going to happen. So there's a possibility, there's always a possibility that they'll come in higher simply because of all the factors we've already reiterated. So that is always a possibility. So we may have to come back and say, do we need more? Or do we look at what things don't we want to do? Or is, is this where the direction the board wants to go? And so, right now, this is what we know, and so this is what we're bringing to the board. And as we know more in the next couple of months, we will be bringing more recommendations back to you as far as what those needs may possibly be, depending on what the bids come back at.
And we'll, and plus, just to make it clear, our fiscal year-end isn't until June thirtieth?
That is correct.
So we will have all this worked out before next year, so there, so that should also help in our planning.
That is correct. So as we work through our budget plan for next year's, this information will be coming in during this process. So we will continually update the board as to what those needs are, if there are additional needs, need from the general fund. Or other funds as, as we can utilize capital dollars or those types of things, or long-term facility maintenance. We're going to look at all the options that there are available and bring recommendations forward to the board.
And then my other question had to do with the, where these funds are. So we have a fund that you've set aside to make sure that we've got the operating dollars coming in from the tax levy, from what I understood you said, to make sure we've got the, the money to open up and fund the operation level of, of the schools. Which fund is that coming out of?
The operations of the schools is the general fund. So those monies are in that same fund as we are looking at assigning these dollars to. However, we're not utilizing to the full extent those dollars until we open those buildings up. And that's how we're able to utilize some of them at this point because they're not, they will be utilized fully to their full extent when the buildings are open. We have hired some staff, some additional custodial staff, some additional other staff that we have needed that are part of those dollars at this point. And so in transportation and those kinds of things, we've utilized some of those dollars currently, and some we have not. So we've been able to build our fund balance a little bit because we haven't totally used all those. Once those buildings are open, we will be utilizing to the full extent the additional referendum dollars that were approved by the community.
So as part of that too, is, as we're looking at the current additions, so Westwood, Edgewood, Red, Jeffers Pond, Redtail Ridge. So as we look at staffing and, and bringing, and bringing those classrooms ready for student use, we'll start to allocate those funds as they're open for student use and building, building usage.
Okay, so just to clarify, we have another line here for the assigned construction that will see paid down according to how we need it, which is great because we've got that separate line item. I, my question really was, is which line item or which fund or however you described it is, are those?
The very first line, the unassigned.
The unassigned operating, that's why I was trying to get out, okay.
But that, but if you look, the construction is coming out of that very first line and being reallocated on a separate line. That's how that is looking.
As it's being, right, okay. Thank you very much for the clarification.
Are there any other questions?
So tonight, you're asking us to potentially approve the 1.5 million in the assigned?
I'm asking you to allocate that, and when it will, it'll now so that we can count on those dollars. But when you'll actually see that, final allocation will be at the audit process in October. So we'll be able to utilize, we won't need those funds immediately. And so as we're needing them, they'll be available for next fiscal year's process.
So they're as-needed funds?
Yeah. We do believe we will be needing them.
Well, you can always hope.
You can.
Are there any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve assigning construction dollars at 1.5 million in the budget coming from the general fund?
So moved.
By Stacy, second?
Second.
Jonathan, any questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Delwell and Jeff Martin to talk about the high school bid packages coming forward.
Good evening, Chair Schimmick, School Board Dr. Stahl. We would like to have the school board award this evening contracts for Bid PAC thirteen. Back in January, January sixteenth, we had an extensive bid opening for Bid PAC thirteen, High School. There's a couple of challenges we've worked through. I have that highlighted at the end of this presentation, and if you don't mind, I'll read the approvals we are looking for first. So WorkScope four twenty-one, Masonry, Axel H. Omen, three million two hundred thousand. Red Cedar Steel Erectors, Bid PAC, or WorkScope five twenty-one, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand. WorkScope six ten Carpentry Selective Demo and General Construction. George F. Cook Construction, two million five hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred dollars. Roofing and Metal Panels, WorkScope seven fifty. Palmer West Construction, two million six hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. WorkScope eight thirty-three, Coiling Doors and Folding Grills. Twin City Garage Door, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. WorkScope eight forty, Aluminum Enchances, Storefronts, Curtain Walls, and Window Glazing. Envision Glass Incorporated in the amount of one million nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars. WorkScope nine twenty, Commercial Drywall, two million sixty-nine, two million sixty-nine thousand dollars. Sorry. WorkScope nine thirty, Grazini Brothers, in the amount of four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars for tile. WorkScope nine fifty, Acoustical Ceilings and Panels. Saunas Interiors Incorporated in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. WorkScope nine sixty-five, Resilient Flooring and Carpet. Floris by Becker, eight hundred thousand dollars. WorkScope nine six six, Athletic Flooring. Anderson Ladd, in the amount of four hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. WorkScope nine six seven, Tarazzo, in the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, four hundred and ninety-five. That went to Grazini Brothers. Painting, WorkScope nine ninety. Franzin Decorating Incorporated in the amount of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Operable Wall Systems, WorkScope one, one thousand twenty-two to Huffcor Incorporated, sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. WorkScope one thousand fifty-one, Lockers, Olympus Lockers and Storage in the amount of sixty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-two. WorkScope one thousand one hundred and forty, Food Service Equipment to Belter LLC in the amount of one million three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. WorkScope one mil, one thousand one hundred and sixty-five Gymnasium Equipment. H&amp;B Specialized Products in the amount of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. WorkScope twelve thirty-five Laboratory Casework and Fume Hoods. Cosney Corporation in the amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and five dollars. Conveying Equipment. WorkScope fourteen hundred, Access Lifts Incorporated in the amount of thirty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. WorkScope twenty-one hundred Fire Protection to Total Fire Protection Incorporated in the amount of five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. WorkScope twenty-four hundred HVAC Controls to Yule Company in the amount of four hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty. WorkScope thirty-two ten Asphalt Paving Curbs and Exterior Concrete to Batiminas Roadways in the amount of one million one hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And Landscaping and Fencing to Greenscape Companies Incorporated. That's WorkScope thirty-two ninety in the amount of four hundred and eight thousand, four hundred dollars. So it is recommended that these bids be accepted. We also would like to reject the bids for WorkScope four twenty-one, which is our apparent low had made a mistake on their bid form. And so we're recommending to go to the next lowest bidder, which is Axel Omen. WorkScope nine six six Athletic Flooring from Dynamic Sports Flooring. I think that was an incomplete bid.
Correct.
And so, again, we would like to award to, one second, please.
Anderson Ladd.
Anderson Ladd. Thank you, Jeff. And then clocking and fire stopping, we would like to rebid that. So in summary, the recommendation is to award bids today totaling twenty-one million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred dollars.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the bid, big bid package number thirteen for the high school additions and renovations?
Made.
By Mary, second?
Second.
By Stacy? Any questions? Okay. All those in favor, I'm sorry?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I know you guys have added this out at the finance and facilities.
It was gone over at finance and facilities, you're correct.
Just saying, thank you for all the work on this.
It is a big package. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero.
Thank you.
Thanks for the extra work. Moving on to our new business, approval of the name for the new elementary school and district activity fields.
Good evening, everyone. We would love to be able to present to you again this presentation. I know that you've seen this at the study session. I've had a chance to talk a little bit, but for our viewing public tonight and those present, we'd like to briefly go over the process. Just as a reminder, this all started back in December when we took a look at your board policy and started putting together a committee. This is the committee that you approved back in December. It is a group made up of staff who are support staff, teachers, parents in the district, as well as community members. Your board policy is eight oh seven. That does have some guidelines for us to take a look at when we put together a naming committee and direct the public to provide some input on naming. So we did put together the committee, as you saw. The committee does have some recommendations, less than five. And you, of course, are the body that gets to make the decision. And when we did communicate this to the public, we also passed along that we wanted historical and geographical significance of the location to be considered when providing name ideas. So we communicated this in a number of ways, through email, through our two local papers, the website and Facebook. And we had quite a few submissions over the course of the month that of, of course, included winter break. We had a nice, long period of time so people could provide some names, and we had over a hundred and three people submit some ideas. And then we took all of those, compiled every single name, idea that was submitted, and had the committee review those names. I know you've also had a chance to look at all of the names that were submitted. And here they are. I'll let Jeff present them to you.
There were three that are, that have been presented and coming forward tonight for board consideration. Dan Patch Elementary, Hamilton Landing Elementary, and Sandridge Elementary. So the committee spent a lot of time looking, again, referencing policy, looking at the categorization of names, and just having a conversation around what to bring forward to the board. And these are the three that they have brought forward for board consideration. I will go to the next slide, and then I'll come back to this one. There, there was a conversation around the previous owner of the area, Bill Pearson. And so currently, we have the athletic fields that are adjacent to the, where the new elementary is going. The community group, or the committee group did look at or is recommending bringing forward honoring the previous owner, Bill Pearson, who passed away in the naming of the fields. And so we have reached out to the family. The family is supportive and, and very honored if, for their dad's name to be considered as part of the athletic field. We did go through and follow up. There is a William G. Pearson Senior, as well as a William G. Pearson Junior. They are related, father and son. William G. Pearson Junior is Bill Pearson, the one who passed away August two thousand seventeen. And so, again, committee is bringing forward naming of the athletic fields there. And those are the, the current Daggett Field, which is the softball field, would still continue to be named Daggett Field. With that, we'll bring it back to the three names and open it up for board discussion.
And if the board is okay, I'd prefer that we take this in two motions, one for the athletic fields and one for the elementary. So I'll open it up for discussion on the elementary naming. We would like to state their opinions. We had some discussion at, about this at the work session already, and there was some information in the paper. But going forward, if anyone has anything they would like to say, now's a good time. Mary?
First of all, we, as, as Lee mentioned, we did look at the top three names that were brought forward by the committee. And at that time, I do want to point out, we did not know that Hamilton Landing was also a subdivision, which I think was the discussion with Blue Sky, but that was one that seemed, of the three that were brought forward, the one that I, you know, we were leaning towards. However, I, I do want to bring it back for a discussion to say now that it's been actually advertised in the paper for the new subdivision and everything like that, if, if, if we want to reconsider. The other thing about the, the three names in general is that, as, as, I did mention this at the study session and just for, you know, informational purposes, you know, the environmental impact as well as the native cultural impact of the land is not represented here. And I didn't know if that was something that now that we do have one of the names potentially being a subdivision, which is what was not wanted, if there's an opportunity to, to, to maybe look at these names again or ask the committee for more suggestions and more to choose from. I, I'm not sure where to go, but I, I do think that... I, I'm not sure where to go, but I, I do think that, the more I've thought about it, the more I think that maybe we need to reconsider some of the names here.
I think.
Not sure if that's even something that can be done.
That's actually not the question right now, but I understand what you're saying. The committee wasn't required to come back with any certain number, as long as it was less than five. I agree with you that we did not know that Hamilton Landing was a development in the, in the district, and our preference is not to do that, to name it after a development. We do have two other names. I guess I'd like to hear from the rest of the board before we would decide to bring it back to the committee, because that wasn't their charge. Our plan was to follow the timeline that was presented, and to have a name tonight. I guess everyone's tired of calling it the new elementary and would like to move on with a real name, to give it some identity. So, if anyone else wants to start, or I'll start calling on names, I guess I'll be the teacher here.
Does.
Go ahead, Michael.
I'll follow up to what Mary said, I think for future naming considerations, that could be something that's put in the guidelines to a committee for future buildings that also take in mind, you know, for representing diversity or the native culture, the history. Having said that, I also think it's important to honor the committee, we did bring together the guidelines we gave them, and gave them the responsibility, not us, of bringing those forward for us to make a decision on. So, I would like to not lose sight of what you're saying for future exploration, I think that's important. And I've heard from other community members as well. But I also want to work, honor all of the time and energy that was put in by the committee. And, and at the study session, it's no secret that I was a fan of Dan Patch. So I'm comfortable with the options myself that are left, but I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels.
My question would be, does anybody here, was anybody here when that policy was created to not have, was the intention to avoid having a building with the name of the development in which it was located? Because it's my, it's my understanding that Hamilton Landing, the development, is not going to likely be in the boundaries that would be sending students to Hamilton Landing, the elementary school, if that were the name. And I don't know if that matters, I don't know how much we care. But what, I think the intention, as I understand it, the original intention is that we're not naming a school after the community, after the neighborhood it's in, but maybe I'm mistaken about that.
You're asking me to think a long way back. I don't believe that's ever been in the policy, that we did that, I think it was just a choice that was made in discussion. And maybe somewhat a little bit of a recommendation from the committee, I'm not sure if that actually came up with the committee, because, you know, Big Sky is where this school is, will be located, and that is a development. And I think they were shying away from using that title. So if we went into, and picked up another development, that's somewhat contradictory, I guess. And as you all know, I was a fan of Hamilton Landing, but it's a little harder to do that if there's a development with that name already. So, is it written somewhere? No, I do not believe so.
In, in light of the new development? Do we have, do we still have anybody who would support Hamilton Landing? Or do we just eliminate that?
Why don't we hear from everyone before you go to that?
Thoughts are?
Yeah.
One of the questions that I have, and I'm not sure Jonathan, if this is coming also with what your thoughts are, is, we also set the timeline, is there a requirement for us to do this tonight? Or can we make a motion to maybe think on this, since it was a new development? It, pun intended, of what we had discussed, and, and, and it does change the, the, the options. It, it's not that we need to make the naming convention, the naming committee go back with brand new ones, but, again, they took the top three of what they had and presented it to us, it's possible that maybe there is more in line?
Possibly, I'll, I won't say anything yet, I'll talk.
I guess, I guess the, the board did have this information. Three of the board members here had it Tuesday night, and three of the board members here had it, had it Wednesday night. So, you know, the board ultimately makes the timeline, I think this is the, the timeline that was communicated to the community and, and the committee. But, board has had it for a while.
Jonathan, can't stall anymore, which one do you prefer?
Oh, I'm, I'm a Dan Patch fan.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, given the enlightenment that there's a development after Hamilton. I, I liked Hamilton and I liked Dan Patch, so I could go either way, and with knowing what we know about Hamilton now, I.
Well, I didn't like Dan Patch, because I thought it was overused, I don't have anything against the, the horse, or the idea, or anything like that. But, you know, as I was thinking about it going into this meeting, I did spend the weekend at two different restaurants, in which half the drinks in Savage were named Dan Patch at the restaurant. So, I, I just, I'd like to see something a little bit more unique be attached to the, to the elementary school. And, you know, so I would actually move my vote to Sandridge, because I do want to stay away from naming a school, because Hamilton Landing was my first choice. I do want to name, kind of move away from naming a school the same as a subdivision, not because of where the kids in that subdivision may or may not go to school, but because it's just the general confusion, maybe? From a naming convention, from a map perspective, from a whole bunch of different things, that's, that's my general impression.
I also agree with Mary, that Hamilton Landing, after we discovered that it's also going to be the name of a subdivision, would create some confusion, especially on behalf of parents, who may or may not be familiar with where the subdivision is in relation to the school. I count myself among one of those that would likely be confused. And being a self-professed science nerd, I really like geology and topography, and the fact that we are actually looking at the particulates that were in the ground before we did construction. So Sandridge Elementary is my vote.
Wow. Can we just go Hamilton Elementary? I'm not opposed to Dan Patch, but I, I feel like Mary, that there may not be, well, there may not be a lot of things officially named Dan Patch. There's a lot of other things named Dan Patch, references to it, Savage, their logo is about the horse. I mean, so Dan Patch is around a lot, so the argument that there aren't many things named that doesn't really, I don't necessarily agree with. I really liked Hamilton Landing, so I'm kind of disappointed that that maybe isn't going to go. So I'm kind of landing a little bit on Sandridge, because we did talk about it being historical, the topography, the, the lay of the land, so to speak, and it is a sandal and gravel pit that we're building this school in. So, I'm kind of leaning towards Sandridge. That puts us, from what everyone's saying, on a three-three, which isn't going to go very well. So after everyone, I'm going to ask again then, after everyone has heard from everyone else, would anyone change their mind?
It's funny, because I had changed my mind, because I was going to vote for Hamilton.
Tonight?
Well, without about the name.
I, if this goes to a vote, it will go down, is that correct?
If we don't come up with a name, do federal employees stop working? So we shut down the schools until we get a name?
We don't have that power. I think if it goes to a three-three vote, it goes down, is that correct?
In the interest of.
What goes down?
The vote, it fails, we have to.
What?
I'm not sure.
What are we voting on?
Yeah, we're, we're doing.
Are we not voting on anything, I mean?
We are voting on the, on the, on the name, and right now, what you've all indicated, it would be, it would be a three-three vote. And I, and I'm getting the impression that none of you are wanting to change one way or the other?
Well, I, I, it will, if, if, if we're not going to shut down the school, and the federal government doesn't shut down either, is there an issue with someone bringing a motion to say, let's delay it to the next board meeting? Or does that prevent us from doing something that we already, that we need to do? It's my, it's my impression that from the, the county register, we've already named it.
Yep.
Something, even though that won't stick, it's just the default name. But what really happens if we delay it to the next board meeting?
Well, I'm not sure what our purpose would be. My, my hesitation is that we approved a group of people to spend a lot of time looking at names, and they came forward with three names. I mean, Hamilton Landing is still a viable name, it's, it's an option that we can use, it doesn't violate policy, it doesn't violate anything else. It's just preferential, I guess, as to preferences, as to whether we want to do that. I hesitate, I hesitate, because I don't want to, trying to think of the word. I don't want to minimize the work that the committee did, and we did agree on a timeline. And to be fair to the committee and to our community, you know, they're expecting us to come up with a name tonight. That's probably one of the biggest reasons.
Well, what was number four on the list? We got the top three, what was?
There wasn't really a four, that's not how, how the committee, I mean, they looked at all of them, and they, you know, they talked about, and they're, you know, I don't, I think the folks said that they could live with all of these, but I don't know that there was ever a fourth that was really discussed.
Okay, Jonathan?
My question would be, we are missing one member. Does anybody here know how, if Melissa were here, what her vote would be?
Doesn't matter.
No, it, you know what, it doesn't matter, because if you're not here, you can't vote. But we're all here, and it's time to make a decision, and if we know what that would be, in, from my perspective, I would change my vote, because it's time to make a decision. It's not, it's, if we have Sandridge, if we have Dan Patch, what matters is we're going to staff it with amazing educators, and we're going to have amazing students in it, and at the end of the day, that's, that's the most important thing.
Okay, any other comments?
I mean, my, my biggest was Sandridge, I just feel it's very similar to Redtail Ridge. I mean, you got two ridges, we don't really have any other similar, so, to me, and they're closely located. I mean, it's a little redundant, in my opinion.
And the other side of the coin is, they are in close proximity to each other, and so, they, they can go together that way. I mean, I guess you look at it both ways, but I know what you're saying. Any other comments? Do we all agree that Hamilton Landing will not be in our vote? Or do you all want to vote for all three? Okay.
I wouldn't support Hamilton Landing as landing.
I wouldn't either. Support Hamilton Landing anymore either.
Would, would we support Hamilton Elementary? That is, that is consistent with the history?
Going against the committee?
Is that against the committee's wishes, or is that consistent with our history?
I guess I need some feedback from the committee members that were here.
They thought it was closer to the musical?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There, there was discussion around Hamilton Landing and Hamilton. I think the Hamilton Landing was more of that, that historical reference, I mean, grounded in the historical reference. Same thing with Dan Patch, the historical reference, and then Sandridge with the geographic reference. And so, you know, they were, you know, there was discussion, but having Hamilton Landing as part, as opposed to Hamilton, was the direction of the committee.
Okay, so we'd be going against their recommendation to drop Landing?
Unfortunately, the committee, as well as us during the study session, did not know there was a subdivision being named that too, so that's.
Yep, correct.
Correct.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Jeffrey, going to say something?
Please do.
I was just going to say, the, the direct, the, the next thing would be to, to make a motion on one of these names in a second.
I motion that the name become Dan Patch Elementary, for the new elementary.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Does anyone want, can we, can, I'm not sure how to do this, Martha, do we go to another motion? For Hamilton Landing?
Oh, in order.
Or the next one?
I'd like to make a motion for Sandridge.
If there's a motion for Sandridge, do you have a second?
A second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of Sandridge, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion fails, both motions fail. I'll make a motion, well, I can't, I can't do it. We did not have a name for the elementary school. I guess, with, in, in light of that, and with new information, I'm, guess I'm assuming that we take it back to that committee, if the committee can meet one more time, and possibly come up with same names, other names, whatever.
I think we should give them a charge, it's either, are we getting rid of all those? Are we keeping two? Are we telling them, what are we going to tell them then?
I don't know, what does the board want to do?
Want to open it up, well, first of all, let me just ask the, the, the basic question is, is there any spokesperson here? I don't know if you guys are the spokespeople for the committee, if they would be willing to reconsider, because that's a lot of time out of people's lives.
I don't think you can speak for, you can't, I mean, we have to honor the process, and I think we have to honor the people involved. And so, either we tell them, I mean, I don't know, we tell them, throw them all out, and come up with them, or out of those two, you pick one and come forward with a recommendation, one going forward? Because we're obviously split.
If we ask for a third name and keep those two, then.
No, I, I, I mean, I'm not saying that, I'm saying, maybe we tell them, it's Dan Patch or Sandridge, or we tell them, none of those, come up with something new, and come up with one. I don't know, I'm just throwing out ideas, but I think we should give them, if it's going to go back to the committee, it needs to be specific guidelines, so that we're going to come up with a decision, because it's a little, to be honest, a little ridiculous.
I would feel, I would feel a lot better if we went back to the committee. If you're, if you're trusting the committee to make this decision, I would feel better with that direction, than.
What direction?
Asking them to make the decision.
Of the, of the two we can agree on?
If they can come to consensus on the decision, I think, I think at this point, you know, the, their ideas came out of input from a hundred and three other people, who were also a part of this process. And they looked at, you know, what those folks brought forward, and then had their own different conversations about it. So, I, that would be my recommendation, which, which is different than how the board normally, how that policy normally reads. But if the board is comfortable bringing back, having that committee bring back those two names, then we can convene that group and go through a process, where we, they come to consensus on that.
I, I would like to suggest that we just leave it up to the committee, given the, the charge they've already had, that, that, we're concerned about Hamilton Landing being the same as the subdivision, and the other two failed in a vote. So, please provide your recommendations going forward, based upon the, the results of tonight. I, I think, I think we should.
Between these two, between these two?
I, well, do you guys, are you the committee now?
No, no, between these two, I meant Dan Patch and Sandridge.
Between the two names.
No, I think, I think we should let them go back, given the results, and have them discuss it and come up with their best. Because that's what they did the first time. They, they, you know, clearly, the, the, the feedback that I got too, from just describing it, is that everyone was leaning towards Hamilton Landing. So, we obviously, the variables have changed, so what if we send them back with, okay, the, the board was split between Dan Patch and Sandridge, and we're concerned about Hamilton Landing, please come up with what you really want in a recommendation, given the, given the discussion from the board and given the vote. I mean, I don't want to go back and say, you can only choose between those two, I don't think that's fair to them. I think the variables have changed for them also, and they, they need to be given that opportunity to discuss that amongst themselves.
And then come back with one recommendation?
Yeah, that would make it easier for us, wouldn't it?
I think it would be easier, to be honest.
Is that increasing scope for them, to kind of open it up to more than those names, though, or is that manageable?
They have the hundred and three names, or whatever.
I mean, they have the information already, they already have the feedback, we're not asking, ask, ask, sorry, asking them to go back to the public, it's just going back to their level with their data, and, and saying to them, what, come forward.
I, I'm feeling to honor the, the process, that we need to take it back to the committee, and they need to come back with another recommendation, whether they choose to come back with the same ones, if they want to add to it, they can go up to five, or if they take one out, because they know now Hamilton Landing is a development that they didn't know before, and come back with another recommendation, they have the background, we don't, we don't have that discussion. You've given us the names, but we're not, we haven't, we weren't there for the discussion. So I would like to take it back to that committee and I still think the board needs to make that final decision in order to honor our policy.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion for the committee to reconvene and reconsider the naming conventions, given the result, given the discussion at the board, considering the discussion at the board.
I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second by Jonathan? Any other questions or comments?
Will we provide any guidance or just a blanket? We'd like you to reconsider.
And follow the policy.
I think we want them to follow the policy and follow the same procedure that you did with the first three. That would be my expectation, I guess.
Yes.
So they have, so just for clarification, they, they will not come back with any more than five?
Correct. Five's the max.
And if they want to, they may come back with one.
Right. Or two, or three, or one.
Do we have a motion in a second? We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion or questions?
When?
Any other clarification?
I just, timeline. What are we talking timeline? Can we do this?
I would like to see it come back at our work session. I'm guessing we'll probably have to open up for something else anyway for the board meetings, or for a board meeting.
You mean this next, coming up here?
The next one?
The study session, open up.
The end of, what is this?
February.
February.
It's just a question of can they meet?
I don't, that's, that's a lot to ask to, to have a meeting in the next two weeks.
Wait till, I, I don't, I agree with Terry. I think that's a lot to ask. And my, you know, my assumption was that we would be, we would wait to March. We wouldn't make them expedite this decision.
We can do that.
So should I modify my, my motion to say March?
No, no, that they'll come back to us, but that is.
We'll get back as soon as we can. And if there's a way we can before, we certainly would.
I just know that a lot of people are anxious for a name. And so if we can, that's great. You know, I wasn't really thinking about, it's only two weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries six zero. We have one more motion. Would anyone like to make a motion to?
I would move to name the athletic fields after William G. Pierce.
Second?
A second.
By Enrique. Any other discussion? We have had a lot of discussion on this as well, and I think it's a great way to honor a man that helped us along the way to build this, get this elementary school going. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes six zero. Thank you. Child Nutrition Services Department and Wellness Update, Emily Malone.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Stallow. No decisions have to be made with my quick update here. We'll get through this quickly. I am.
How are we?
So I just wanted to give you kind of an overview of our department and some updates on it. I know there's a few new board members here, so I thought I'd give you kind of a structured function of Child Nutrition Services here at PLSAS. So the National School Lunch Act was established in 1946. It has two main purposes. One is to feed healthy meals to kids at a low cost. And the other one is to support domestic farmers by taking surplus off the market. In order to do that, here we have 75 employees. There's myself. And our assistant director is Jamie Anderson. We've got Linda Roach, a specialist here at the district office. And then there's nine kitchens and 11 feeding sites, meaning that one of those kitchens feeds Bridges ALC, Twin Oaks. And then Westwood feeds the kids over at Edgewood. We do what is called offer versus serve here. We offer all five components of a meal. In fact, we go above and beyond and offer a variety of fruits and vegetables in addition to those five meal components. And then kids can take, at least, they have to take at least three of those components. And one of those components has to be a half a cup of fruit or vegetable. There's a ton of other regulations that go along with it, but that's kind of the basics. At our elementary schools, we serve two hot meals and one cold meal a day. And when I say meal, I mean reimbursable meal. And then at our middle schools, we have the same options. We have the three reimbursable meals plus à la carte. And at the high school, where we are off of the National School Lunch Program, we have four reimbursable meals and a lot more à la carte options. Total meals, this year we've served 393,427 lunches and 89,373 breakfasts. This is just our average lunch participation for this school year from September to February. And also at the bottom, I'm showing here that we, we typically raise our participation about 2% every year. We're trending a little higher right now, but what we see happen towards the end of school is, you know, when the weather gets nicer, kids' palates change a little bit. They get kind of fatigued by the menu that we've had all year. So they start to bring their lunches kind of more towards the end of the year. So hopefully, we're going to be up above that 2%, but that's not, not guaranteed at this point. So I did want to talk about the Prior Lake High School. We, we continue to closely monitor our financials at the Prior Lake High School because that's kind of part, well, it's part of our determining factor for whether or not we stay off of the National School Lunch Program. Our total sales increased between '16 and '17, '17, '18 school year by 3%. And then I focused on the Lake House Cafe. We have, we had a 7.9% increase there between those two school years. And we really attribute that, that to the fact that we started serving a reimbursable meal out of that Lake House Cafe. It allowed our students to have, you know, physically just another place to go and get a healthy meal option because our dining room was so compact and so crowded. So, so that's why our sales increased. As you can see, year to date, for this year, we're still at that 2% increase. So I don't see that having such a big jump like it did last year. But our free and reduced rate at the high school is still around nine or 10%. So we're still able to support those kids and feed all of those kids for free and stay a viable program, so. We, this is our department continuous improvement plan. This is something that Jamie and I go over with our leadership team quarterly. We talk about it. We modify it. We come up with ideas and ways to, to support it. And everywhere that's underlined there is what's in line with the, the district continuous improvement plan. So we, we really try and, as a, as a support, or support department, excuse me, support the district continuous improvement plan and the strategic plan. Wellness update. So part of the National School Lunch Program and the Healthy, Younger, Free Kids Act is, states that we have to have a wellness policy that includes standards for nutrition and physical activity for students during the school day. For us here, this is Policy 514, Student Wellness. We, this, in March, we'll actually have a, our triennial MDE review, which will focus on this wellness update, or this wellness policy, to see the strength of it. So we've been working really hard on it. We've got some principals and administrators and a board member, some students and community members, and even a representative from SHIP on our committee. One of the results of the wellness policy is that we, in '17, '18, we received a SHIP grant. And again, it has to be physical activity and nutrition component. So in '17, '18, we got scales and cutting boards and kid knives that kids can use in our school gardens. And so they were able to really see how much they produced out of the school garden. They used those scales to measure how much they were, how much they're, they were producing and harvesting. Anyways, and then they got the cutting boards and the kid knives so they could make simple recipes like salsas and stuff like that. In '18, '19, we're thinking, we're going to submit a grant for possible, they're huge, large immersion blenders so that we can start using more fresh fruits in smoothies and then also make more soups from scratch. And then the physical component will be, we're, we're trying to wordsmith it right now so that we'd, we'd like to have some activity, like some sport, sporting activities that the middle schools could have for their recess time, which they don't have a structured recess time or a set recess time. But a lot of times, those kids are out there kind of on the blacktop or wherever they can, throw in the basketballs and the footballs from the gym and, you know, there's territory things with that. So we just thought we could possibly get some things like hula hoops and footballs and basketballs and stuff like that that can be specifically for that recess time. So we're trying to wordsmith how to make that a sustainable program and commit to letting those kids go outside as much as possible. And this is getting towards the end. So this is showing just that over the last few years, we've chosen not to, to update a lot of our kitchen equipment in preparation for the construction. So our fund balance has been increasing on purpose so that we can save it and use it towards some, some equipment in the construction process. Didn't make any sense to replace some things when we didn't know what the new kitchen was going to look like or the updated kitchen was going to look like. So we've really been kind of holding on to our fund balance and, and trying not to use it, make do with what we have so that we can use it during this fun time, so. And that's it. Do you guys have any questions?
Board, have any questions?
I appreciate the update.
All right.
But I do have a question.
Sure, okay.
I got a question too, Lee. I was trying to get your attention. Oh, sorry. Do you want to go first or?
Maybe, I, I don't, I don't expect you to have these numbers, but I was just kind of wondering, what's the overall percentage for free and reduced lunch in the, in the district?
We are like 13 and a half percent overall.
Is that those who have applied, right, and, and received it? Is that what it is?
Yep. It would only be the ones that have applied and received it that we would know. Or the data would only include out those.
The only reason I bring this up is because at the legislative session and the Minnesota School Board Association meeting, there was a, a huge discussion with various school districts going on about how to handle the number of kids who actually need it, but they can't get the parents to apply. And I was wondering if you just had, and I'm not expecting you to have these numbers, but do you have an idea of what the, the real number may be here? Do we have that issue too?
We definitely have that issue. Or I, in my opinion, we have that issue. I can't say that for sure. In my opinion, I would say we have that issue because we do have, we do have meal debt. You know, we have parents who can't afford to send their kids to school with money or with food. And so we do have that, I believe. I don't know what that number is though, you know? What we did see going from last school year to this school year is that our number of free kids, kids that qualified, qualified for free, went down by like 15 or 20%. I don't remember the numbers exactly. But our reduced kids went up by the same exact amount. So it seems like we're still getting the same people applying every year.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah. And all free and reduced kids eat for free in Minnesota, so.
Right. Thank you.
So my question had to do with, a number of years ago, when a child couldn't pay, they were kind of almost picked out of the group and only got to eat certain food. That's, we no longer do that. That's not, doesn't happen here. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
It is not happening.
So if every child gets to eat, whether there's, whether they have money or not, we don't turn anyone away and they get to eat the hot lunch, maybe not the à la carte? Is that correct?
That's exactly right. Yep. They get to eat from those three choices at the elementary level and four choices at the secondary level, the same food that everybody else has offered. We've, we don't overtly identify students at all. We don't tell them, hey, you know, tell mom you need more lunch money. We do not address it at all. We really, really feel passionate that that is the parent's debt and that is an adult problem, not a kid problem. So we don't talk to kids about it at all.
So how do you cover those costs?
We do fundraising things every once in a while. We do, we're working on that. You know, we, we had the Harvest Table Dinner recently. We do a turkey fundraiser where we offer, we partner with Rock. And so we, at the holiday times, we purchase turkeys from our local vendor. And staff and, staff can either donate a turkey to a Rock family or they can donate the money towards a student need. Or it's, it's really just, the way that you have to allocate angel funds is kind of a typical term of it, is you have to give it, you have to distribute it equitably. So you can't say, you know, I want this money to go to Bridges or this, you know, but.
It goes all into one pot, so to speak.
Correct. It goes into one pot and then it has to be allocated in a special way, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
If I could just interject here, I think a lot of districts are finding that their, their funding unreimbursed is, or parents that aren't paying, aren't paying because they don't have to, is going up significantly in most school districts across the state of Minnesota. So it is an issue for schools because there isn't any other way to reimburse those funds except through the general fund. So there's, just so that you know as a board, that you cannot allocate food service funds to cover debt. That only can be reimbursed from the general fund. So if we do have debt, if we're not doing the fundraising, then the general fund has to cover that debt.
I just want to make a comment to that. Thank you for bringing that up because this is the, I, I've been to other meetings before in the education area and because the, because of that issue with the general fund covering it, I noticed some, there was three school districts that were lobbying to have all free lunches for all kids and then only have the difference because the problem is getting more pronounced. And that's the first time I've ever heard that this year, and that was, that was concerning.
Thank you. Thanks for the update.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Onto the 2019-20 kids company rates. Kelly Vossen.
Nope. I'm not sure we need it.
I think we have it in our packet, but if you get it on the, we do. If you get it on the screen for the public, that'd be great, but.
Page 93. Chelsea promised it would be up here, but it does not.
Oh, here she comes.
All right. Good evening, members of the school board, Chair Schumak, Superintendent Stallow. On behalf of Kids Company and Community Education Services, I'd like to welcome our new school board members. It's been a pleasure getting to know Michael. And welcome back, Stacy. Thank you. Okay, thanks. So Kids Company is proposing some rate increases again this school year. We're looking at a dollar per session. That's an AM before school or after school. And then $2 on our non-school day rate. We feel like that's still really competitive. We're very comparable with our neighboring communities. I did look up some local people. Kids count is around $12 for the session, AM before school and after school. And then the YMCA is about $12.15. So again, we're still really competitive with our neighbor, community, neighboring communities. So, I'm making it short and sweet. Unless there's any questions, I'm seeking board approval.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a motion first. Do I have a motion to approve the Kids Company rates?
So moved.
All right, Michael, did you do that? By Michael, second?
Second.
By Stacy. Any questions?
I had some questions just that I know I'd sent in. And just as far as the rate increases and kind of when you, because I know we increased last year and then we'll have this increase this year, but it had been a number of years, like what are the factors? I mean, like what, you know, I know you're trying to be comparative, but also I just think from, thinking from a budgeting standpoint, I don't want it, like every year we're increasing, you know what I mean?
Well, our expenditures have increased significantly.
Okay.
So this should generate, I think, around $300,000 and it should help offset those expenditures. I anticipate moving forward that the per session, if we do any increases, will be very small. But I think for us on the, the full day rate, that includes breakfast, afternoon snack, all their supplies, any field trips. So really, if you break that down, if people are attending, you know, 10 hours a day, it's $3.90 an hour.
Right.
I think on that one, we'll probably go up a little bit every year until we're feeling good. But I think the per session one, if this gets approved tonight, then I'm feeling confident that it might be a quarter, 50 cents as we move forward.
Oh, smaller.
Yes, much smaller.
Okay. All right. I just, I mean, I want to make sure that you're feeling like it's covered enough, you know what I mean? Like that we're not going to be, you know, continuing like for five years of increasing, you know what I mean? Like it's, might be easier just to like do $2 or something. Be consistent for like three or four years.
We've had some significant expenditures in this area that we need to cover. And so this is what we have to do to make sure that the, that the district isn't losing money in this program. We're not also trying to make a lot of money in this program. We're trying to cover our costs and this is what we need to do to cover the costs in this program.
Okay.
I, I have a question. Do you, do you feel that this may affect people's ability to enroll? Or do you think there's going to be any opposite effect of losing enrollment with the dollar increase?
increase? Here.
I don't anticipate that it will.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Moving on to the approval of the annual, the annual resolution. Mr. Querem. Is that you?
So, the beginning of the staffing process always starts with annual resolution where the board directs administration, if necessary, to come forward with any cuts. So, this is an annual, an annual resolution that typically all school districts do. And like I said, it kind of kicks off the whole process as we go forward. What's that?
I just want to make it clear that this doesn't guarantee that we'll make any cuts.
Right.
It's something that we just do on a annual basis.
But if you don't have the resolution, then you're stock right if there are cuts come around. So, like I said, it's something that I think almost all districts do February. And I'm sure you have in the past.
We've done this over the year before, so.
Do I have a motion to approve the annual resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs, positions, and reasons thereof?
So moved.
Jonathan, second. By Mary?
Okay.
Any questions? Okay, this is a real call vote. Michael?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
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 All right. That motion passes six zero. Thank you. Moving on to policy. And who's doing policy? Oh, she's been here all night.
Good evening, Chair Schumick, Dr. Stallow, members of the board. I am here tonight to make a recommendation that the board remove policy six oh eight point one, which is the provision of special education and related services at private schools. The rationale for removing the policy is that federal law already requires us as a district to determine where we are going to provide those services. So, we have the option as a district and we have the final say as a district to say we want to have those services in our buildings, we want to go to a neutral site, or we may choose, for whatever reason, in an isolated incident, to choose to deliver those services on site. The other portion of the policy is related to preschool. And again, the district is not required to have a policy on it. So, the recommendation is to remove the entire policy and then we can continue to exercise discretion as to where we want to provide those early childhood special ed and related services as we move forward. Any questions on that?
Before that, this is the second and potentially final reading of this policy. We went over this at our work session. Do I have a motion to approve removing this policy?
So made.
By Mary, second?
Second.
By Michael. Now, any questions? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. Thank you. Administrative reports. Dr. Stallow.
Thank you. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential. As contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community, our collective work is focused on that mission. And tonight, I'd like to share with you some of the work in which we've been engaged. First of all, we are getting ready to launch our third annual staff, student, and parent online surveys. The survey window this year will be from February twenty-fifth through March eighth. As always, these surveys are anonymous and are conducted with the main goal to collect input to help us improve. In addition, this year, the Minnesota Student Survey will be administered in May to students' grades fifth, eighth, ninth, and eleventh. The survey is conducted in schools across the state every three years. The survey data provides useful information to help schools develop effective programs and to enhance student services. We'll be providing samples of the questions to parents, along with instructions on how they opt out of the survey should they wish to do so. And then, just to kind of round out that circle of what we do with surveys, next year, we'll be conducting the Community Satisfaction Survey with Morris Leatherman. We do that every other year. It's a random sample of survey that includes both parents and community members who don't have students in our schools. Want to celebrate and congratulate our Business Services Office. The district has again earned the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award from the Association of School Business Officials International, according to ASBO. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools earned the certificate after providing a high-quality, comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year end two thousand eighteen. This award represents a significant achievement and reflects our commitment to transparency and high-quality financial reporting. Attainment of the certificate signifies that the district has met the level of excellence required by ASBO and is a testament to the integrity and technical competence of the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools business staff. I'd like to congratulate Julie Sink and her staff on again earning this honor. On Thursday, our very own Prior Lake High School Percussion Ensemble will perform at the Minnesota Music Educator Association's Midwinter Clinic at the Minneapolis Convention Center. This is a very high honor as the audition process is rigorous and demands a high standard of excellence for the conference. Students will perform under the direction of Justin Schramm and Keith Kuhlmus. The ensemble also performed last Friday at Prior Lake High School. Finally, I'd like to take a moment to share a message of gratitude to the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools staff. Over the past few weeks, we've been impacted by inclement weather, which causes interruptions to our normal schedules and routines. I want to thank all staff members who have worked to reschedule, communicate, work in less than ideal conditions, who have kept our sidewalks and parking lots cleared and our students safe, and even opened the doors to our students when school was not in session, as Kids Company did. During the course of this meeting, I've received thirteen texts, I'm assuming from superintendents across the metro, about the weather. And as I stated earlier, I will be participating in a four o'clock AM webinar with the National Weather Service to ensure the use of timely data in decision-making. This has been an incredibly unique winter. I want to thank all of you for your patience, parents and staff. I know this is inconvenient and I want you to know that the decisions that we make are all about the safety of our students. On another note, I also want to share immense gratitude to our staff for the love and care they provide our students and families each day, but especially during really difficult times. Over the past few weeks, our hearts have grieved for the families of Sam Foltz, Landon Tottenhagen, and Jackson Anderson. And we have worked to support the members of the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools community who have lost a friend, a teammate, a student, or a classmate. My heart's heavy for all who have experienced this loss. And I am so grateful to the staff members in our schools and in our departments across the district who understand the importance every single day of building meaningful relationships, of cheering kids on to be their very best, of supporting, and most importantly, of loving our students every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Administrative reports.
I do want to talk a little bit about elementary enrollment and online enrollment and kindergarten enrollment. We currently, we have rolled out our online enrollment for resident families in our district to enroll their students for next year from the comfort of their homes, if they so choose, to enroll their children. We also have two stations, you may have noticed in the front lobby, that parents can come and enroll their children there as well. And we do have support for them if need be, via telephone or in person if they come into the district. That being said, as anytime we make changes in anything, it also changes our trend data. And so, in the past, we've had, last year at this time, we had four hundred and five kindergarten students enrolled in the district. And this year, we have three hundred and forty. And I fully expected that we would see some sort of a delay with this, simply because when there isn't as hard and fast deadline as we've had in the past, people just tend to enroll children when they choose. And that they are able to do that. We are still sending out information to parents, hoping that they can, we can get them and prod them to enroll their children so that we can get a better idea of where we're at with kindergarten. And so, if any of them happen to be listening and want to, we would love to have you enroll your children as soon as you can so that we can get the latest, the best data that we can. I don't expect that this means that we have a decline in our kindergarten enrollment for next year by any means, but it's just a new trend. And so, we'll be monitoring this closely and watching it as the months, in the next few months.
Any other administrative reports? Okay, board reports. Have any?
Let me go? Okay. So, a number of us went down to MSBA the middle of January and we attended some of the sessions, I think. Don't speak to theirs. But I, we had a really good session on trust. Just trust, what does it mean for school boards? And the question was, how much is it costing you? So, it was pretty interesting. A good speaker on that, on the opening. And then, we were able to connect with some of our vendors. We saw some of our kids down there. And then, I went to a couple sessions on data requests, actually. It's kind of interesting, over the last nine years that I've been on the board, how the actual sessions have changed over the years. They were much more about, you know, health insurance. Like, that was kind of a thing for a while and there's always a few things, you know, obviously, things in curriculum and things. But now, you used to not be able to find an attorney to get, do a session and now they're like on the entire, I mean, there was like so many sessions. So, open meeting law, you know, that was another one I attended. So, it was, it was pretty interesting, but it was a good vibe. You get to meet a lot of new people to school boards and just existing ones and talk to people from across the whole state. So, that was really good. And then, I had a second AMSD meeting as well where we had, and I'm going to forget her name, but she was the head of Education Policy in the House, Kathy something, I can't remember. Anyway, but she talked about just wanting to get our feedback for the legislative session. And so, she was really, it was good. I mean, she basically said, you know, education's one of her, you know, main pieces and she's worked at it. She works as a parent in the district, so very knowledgeable with what's happening in the schools. But looking at the three-on-three, the cross subsidy, things that we've heard, you know, over and over the years. So, I'm, I'm hopeful that something will happen. It may be a combination of both, but they, they do have the right people at the table talking about the right things. So, that was it for me. Anybody else?
Any other reports or any other comments on the?
I can speak to the conference as well. I would like to underscore too that the opening and closing speaker, who was the same one, spoke very thoroughly about the idea of trust and what does, if you don't have trust, what does it cost you? Time and money and relationships. So, I'd like, we may look at that more down the road, too. Enjoyed seeing our SWAT team, our technology students at the exhibit hall. They were representing our district very well and it was, they were great leaders, showing how they service our district with technology. It was lovely to hear the governor speak and talk about education issues. And then, Jonathan and I spent two days learning all the new board member details. And the, in the additional sessions that everybody attended, the three that I chose were one on student-centered education by the superintendent from Farmington, which was fascinating, a session on open forums in board meetings, and a session on the Minnesota Department of Education and how they do their Minnesota report card. And there's been some changes and they gave some great advice on how you should really look at data, what data you should weigh less, more heavily or less heavily when you're making decisions in your district. And then, my first early childhood education committee meeting was canceled due to weather, unfortunately. But I did have my first community education committee meeting, which was fascinating. As a longtime user of community ed, I had no idea the breadth and depth of that program and everything it covers. So, I'm learning a lot. We talked about the rate increases and all the research that went into that. They're looking at an exciting option for wave students going into ninth grade, possibly expanding that option due to parent input. And then, some upcoming highlights are the Dance With Me Ball on February sixteenth and the Career and Job Fair on March twenty-sixth.
I'm going to keep this short and sweet because it was great to attend. Really thoroughly enjoyed David Horsogger's trust. Again, I'll reiterate that as well. The MSBA has a program specifically designed for boards as a board development program that I think we would be really well served to consider. I would also add that the two days that Michael and I did of newbie folks, and Enrique did it earlier in December, fire hose of information and were full.
Mary, do you have any?
Well, I went to the MSBA conference also. And for those old timers who were part of either this school district or other education programs, he had spoken, I think it was four years ago, five years ago? Yeah. So, and so, it was, it was kind of the same speech, two new stories, but, but it was good. The, went to a few sessions, et cetera. Our curriculum meeting was moved, so we haven't had the first one of the year yet. But I did attend the MNCAP's program and their final presentations as not only a corporate sponsor, but also a mentor. So, that was phenomenal. Those kids are incredibly impressive. I wasn't on the Amazon team, but I was on two other teams and they were very, very good and very thorough. And they really, really love free food. Chipotle is their favorite, it turns out. So, that helped with the motivation. I think that's about it. I know that the robotics team competed and I never got the final score, but I think they, they did pretty well. I do have the meeting with the Technology Committee for the state where the first Lego League and the high-tech sponsors will be to talk about changes of that program and hopefully, hopefully, they'll continue to grow.
Sorry. I'm a little tired. All right. So, I attended the Schools for Equity in Education earlier this week. Unfortunately, it was a snow day, so attendance was quite sparse. But the keynote speaker was Commissioner Ricker, the new Department of Education Commissioner, gave a great speech on the vision of One Minnesota. How do we connect all of our different communities and educate everyone and be inclusive of all Minnesotans regardless of race, gender, abilities? And she sees education as being the ultimate backbone to building that acceptance. She also gave some highlights on what some of the legislative priorities are. I spoke to them earlier about, about funding, funding for all the different programs, but she hit that even harder with special education. Expanded even beyond special education to include social, emotional, and behavioral support. Because the reality is that students don't show up just prepared to learn history or math. They come with all of their baggage and we need to be able to reach every single one of these students, meet them where they are. And we need to prepare all of our educators to be able to adapt and adjust to each one of those students to reach them exactly where they are. So, looking at that as funding priorities. And then, from there, we went into, of those who were in attendance, a presentation on special education within Minnesota and how we can adapt where we are right now to a future state model. So, currently, the process is to look at IQ testing and use, in between first and third grade and to use that as a determinant for what programs children would apply for. And the presenters presented an alternative, alternative view of multi-tier system and support framework where you have a variety of different assessment tools at your disposal so that you can truly evaluate that, that student and provide them the services that they need at that specific time to bridge the gap between where they are and where they need to be to be able to progress, which is a great segue to the Special Education Advisory Committee, which met shortly before our board development this, this afternoon. And I was only able to attend the first thirty minutes of that, but I was really intrigued because on the agenda was that multi-tiered systems and support framework. So, Deb, we're going to connect soon and discuss that.
Just a few updates.
Just a few updates on what's going on at the high school. Next week is Sweethearts Week, and we have a few things planned for the students, including coronation on Friday of this week. We have a pancake breakfast on Monday, dunk tank in the lunchroom on Wednesday, a dodgeball tournament on Wednesday as well. And then, we have Pet Fest on Fri, on Friday, and a dance on Saturday. We are also, we are hoping to have a funding-successful week for all students at the school. Throughout Sweethearts Week, we are also focusing on the emphasis of the Laker Way, which capitalizes on pride, respect, and responsibility. Last week at our school, we also participated in a kindness week put on by Student Council and NHS. Each day, we encourage students to wear different colors, which represented, for example, being kind to yourself, your peers, your community, et cetera. We also have a lot going on in activities and sports. Just to highlight a few, our speech and mock child teams are doing very well. We have a few athletes going to state for Alpine and Nordic skiing. Both the dance teams, jazz and kick teams, are going to state for this upcoming weekend. And also, Cheer was just at Nationals this weekend in Disney World. And many other sports are wrapping up their great winter seasons.
Future events, there's no school on February 18th for President's Day. You don't have to worry about that one. AMSD Day at the Capitol is February 21st. There's a school board study session February 25th at six o'clock in this room. School board regular meeting, March 4th. Originally was the 11th, it will be the 4th in this room. And C-Day at the Capitol is March 12th. And if there's nothing else before the board, I'll take a motion to adjourn. By Jonathan, second?
Second.
Enrique? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
That motion carries six zero. We're adjourned. Thank you.